I think we're ready. I think we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order, or we'll be here momentarily. We're going into executive session anyway. So Debbie, will you note attendance, please?
Yeah.
And we are going to, right away, go straight into executive session, ORS 1926602D, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations, as well as ORS 1926602I, to evaluate the superintendent or top executive. And we will return here when we are done. So with that, we will be headed back. Oh, she is. All right, we're going to jump back into open session, and we are going to do a little switcheroo on the order of the agenda. We are going to move item E, complaint report, up to the top, and then we will proceed in order regarding the rest of them. And so with that...
She comes.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Hi.
Nice to meet you.
Hello.
I brought paper.
Everybody's shaking binder there. You can turn it out.
Okay. Well, I'll let you... Yeah. Thanks, Jonathan, and Rebecca, thanks for doing the investigation for us, and take it away.
Okay, well, hello to those I haven't met. I'm Rebecca Jacobson. I'm an attorney with Garrett Human Law Firm in Salem that works, does school law, and worked at LISA before. So I was retained to conduct an investigation within the scope that the board set out at its December 30th meeting, and that was based on Jolly Patterson's letter dated December 20th, 2019. So what I, how I organized the report is in reference to the memory that Jolly Patterson used. And so only those allegations that were within the scope of Ms. Patterson's analysis are included there. So how would the board like me to address this? We can, I can give a high-level summary, we can go through allegation by allegation. I can answer questions.
I think a high-level summary? I think start with that, we can drill down if anybody has any questions, I think, is that, something like that? As we're going...
I certainly support that. Anybody see that differently?
Okay, so what the board has in front of it is the, my report and the exhibits to the report. So Exhibit 1 is the complaint, the original complaint received dated November 25th, and the attachments to the complaint. Exhibit 2 is the Patterson analysis, is what I refer to it as. Exhibit 3 is when I spoke to the spokesperson for the complainants, who is Owen Fan flu, I asked him of the complainants, who should I also speak to? So Erin Cook was one of those people who I interviewed, and then he provided additional clarification writing. That's included as Exhibit 3. Exhibit 4 are email and attachments provided by a community member, Mr. Chekataf. Exhibit 5 are additional materials provided by board member Nealon. Those are, she provided back some of the exhibits from the complaint, and then some additional documents. So I only provided those that were in addition to that. Last night, I received some additional materials from Ms. Nealon that are included as Exhibit 6. And then went through multiple agendas and watched videos online, and went, so all of that is publicly available, and then your policy is available there. So moving to the specific allegations regarding board member Nealon, if I were to provide a general sense of the allegations against board member Nealon, it was that there, there was a lot of board work happening not at this table and outside of the boardroom. And you have a lot of policies that dictate how the board does its work. There, there's BBF, Board Member Standards of Conduct. And so what I did for each allegation is I pulled those specific provisions of the policy out that might be implicated by the communication. There's BCD, Board Superintendent Relationship, that governs how the board works with the superintendent, the Board Superintendent Working Agreement, that does essentially the same thing. And then you have the superintendent's contract. So these are all things that the board has determined will govern the conduct of board members. So the first allegation, one D, is discussing the evaluation of the superintendent with board members-elect and/or members of the public. You'll remember from Ms. Patterson's analysis that essentially board members-elect should be treated as community members. So at the time, that, which is, is the case, they're not yet subject to the board policies. So the analysis of that was, was there an issue with board member Nealon discussing this kind of information with community members? And the general analysis is, was it disclosure of confidential information? Was it, was it information that was only learned in executive session? Was it, did the communication demonstrate a predetermination of a decision prior to the board discussing it? And based on those general guidelines, I went through and determined whether or not there was a violation. So for this first piece of it, which is board member Nealon receiving an email from a community member saying, hey, look at this summary of the evaluations, see if other board members take issue with it. She just received a communication, she wasn't disclosing confidential information, so it was not a violation. So moving on to, I'm on page 5, this is allegation, or, page 6, excuse me, allegation 1D. This was an email communication among multiple community members. A community member was providing a draft response to the former superintendent and board member Nealon, included some comments that were derogatory in nature. The board has a number of board policies in your board superintendent working agreement, as well as the employment contract that speaks about having respectful communications about district administrators. And while certainly you as board members have freedom of speech that we will talk about at the end, you also have decided to be governed by certain expectations per conduct. So I found that this was a violation of board policy in terms of the derogatory nature of these comments. Exhibit, or, allegation 1E, I'm on page 8. These were a series of text messages between board member Nealon, board member Trager, and the, one of, the one that it was of concern related to, and this is discussed in another allegation as well, is that board member Nealon sought out information from OSBA attorney Spencer Lewis, who serves school districts, and asked for information about how to proceed with the superintendent's contract. This, this legal advice was then offered to board member Trager, who said, yeah, I'd like to see that advice, but I'm wondering about protocol, should all board members have access to information? Have you shared them with Tom? And that demonstrates what the protocol should be when you're receiving information regarding an employment matter of this nature. This should be shared with entire board instead of an individual board member going out and seeking information. You've also decided, as a board, that you have a specific policy that says if you are seeking legal advice, and it's about the superintendent's employment, it should be funneled through the board chair, who would then seek the advice. So the sharing of legal advice waives attorney-client privilege for the board, that's not for an individual board member to decide. So while that text message exchange was not a violation of the policy, as you'll see in a subsequent allegation, that sharing of the information with community members was a violation of the protocol, and that individual board member seeking information was a violation. So I'm looking at allegation 1F, which is on page 11, and these are a number of exhibits which the complainants say demonstrate Director Nealon's extra-board activities to discuss and influence the employment of the existing superintendent with members of the public. So this is in that June time period when there was a lot of movement with the superintendent's contract, and so at this time, what these documents demonstrate is that board member Nealon was working with a number of community members, reviewing communications and making comments about them. As you'll see in the findings, certain of these communications didn't violate board policy, they're just a board member receiving information from community members. Other communications demonstrate additional disrespectful communications about the superintendent, which would at that time be a violation of the board policy. The other concern within these communications is a predetermination of an outcome. So instead of, as you'll see in the later allegations, board members indicating, you know, my initial take on this is, or, I'm not quite sure yet, because I haven't been to a board meeting, that's a general sense of some of the other communications, that's not the sense of some of the communications here in the allegation 1F discussion. Okay, allegation 1H, which is on page 15, is the more robust discussion about what the board has decided, how it will treat the seeking of legal advice, and so that's along the lines of what we've already discussed. Allegation 1I is board member Nealon sending a community member what, essentially a statement about how she plans to act on a grievance at that night's executive session. And so while this wasn't a disclosure of confidential information from an executive session, it did demonstrate a predetermined outcome prior before receiving that information or having a discussion and hearing the same information that all board members did. And that, that was a violation of the working agreement. Allegation 1J was related to an inquiry about the hiring process for the assistant superintendent, and board member Edmonds sent, board member Nealon, an inquiry about the deliberation process. Board member Nealon provided a general response and said, I'd be happy to talk with you at the meeting tonight, good to talk about this in public. There is a confidentiality covenant for hiring, and it is very specific that only the lead administrator can request information about the hiring process, can't be shared with others. Board member Nealon's perspective on that was, well, I thought, yes, that's true for community members and employees, but when I have another board member asking, it would also be privileged information. I didn't see that as a violation. And I think on the whole, this wasn't a violation of the covenant because provided a general response and then said, let's go back to the public process. So reasonable people could certainly disagree on that part, but, but within the context of it, that's how I made that finding. Allegation 1K is just a reference to a May 2018 email that the former superintendent sent to board member Nealon discussing concerns that he had with her conduct, and the complainants indicated this was just background information to demonstrate a pattern of conduct, so I didn't specifically address the allegations contained within it. So that is it for the, those concerns against board member Nealon. Do you want me to go ahead and just move on, and then you can ask questions when we get to the end? Or, anyone ask questions now?
I'd like to just move on.
Okay.
So the second section are those allegations regarding board member Trager. There was only one that remained after Ms. Patterson's analysis, and these related to, it was the same type of concerns about discussing the employment of the superintendent with community members. And so there were excerpts from text messages that were reviewed. So I went through each of those communications that were highlighted by the complainants as being a concern, and in reviewing each of these communications, for the most part, except for one, these were all disclosures of information that was either on board books, on the agenda, had already been discussed in public sessions. So there was no disclosure of confidential information. There was no indication that board member Trager was predetermining an outcome based on the language that she used. For example, she said, stated her opinion, and said, this is the first thought about this scenario. And that, that type of thing, when you're communicating with your constituents demonstrates, yes, but I haven't gone to the board meeting yet. The only concern was on the June 11th, 2018 communication, just said there was a disclosure about the, her individual comments related to superintendent's evaluation, which is only discussed in executive session versus evaluation summary that's in the open session. So that's, that specific comment was in violation.
Because the information was public at that point, but not the person who gave that information. So that was where the confidentiality part, you mean?
Yep. Okay, and then the third section, I relate to the allegations regarding board member Edmonds. Similarly, this was going through various communications to determine whether or not these communicated confidential information from executive session, personnel information that was confidential in nature, or predetermined an outcome. And that was not the case with these communications that were referenced by the complainants. So no, no violations there. So my, on page 26, we get to the conclusion and recommendations for the board. So the, the general sense from the complainants is that these board members' communications outside the board meeting context demonstrate a hidden agenda to take certain action, particularly related to that June 2019 renewal of the superintendent's contract. There's also a concern from the complainants that there's a discussion of these employment-related matters related to the board's only employee, which is the superintendent, and that that should not occur, whether it be as a best practice or by virtue of the operation or policy and working agreements. And all of the communicate, all of the language in your board policy essentially tries to get the board to that place of, those kind of communications should be limited, you should be making decisions based on the information available to all board members here. That doesn't mean that you don't have the, don't have the obligation to listen to and communicate with your constituents, and again, emphasize, so long as you're not disclosing confidential information, and those decisions are not predetermined. There, there is, it should be noted that even in the public records law, information about the superintendent, which is the, who is the CEO for the district, tends to not receive the same protection as other employees within the district, just because of the importance of their position and how, how closely it relates to the general district operations. So there is no bright line rule about exactly what should be disclosed about the superintendent or not, but we do know that the more that is disclosed or discussed, kind of gets into that concern about potentially breaching these board policies or the contract. It also is going to make it really difficult for the district, honest, you know, frankly, to recruit and retain good superintendent candidates. So all of those things are the practical side of that. There was, there were several concerns mentioned within the documents I reviewed about how these board policies might violate your First Amendment right to free speech. And generally, the case law says, hey, you've, you've decided to be board members, you've signed up to follow these board policies, if you don't like them, you can change them. So there's not, there's, there's no restriction on your, your right to free speech, it's just how and when you disclose certain information and the manner of doing so. And, so in terms of the recommendations, the complainants requested a third-party investigation, that happened. They requested the resignation of board member Nealon. That's not, you know, you can request anything, but you certainly have no power to remove another board member. The immediate censure of the board members that were involved, or the board members-elect, so board members Trager, Edmonds, is it Alanak? And McLaughlin, and an additional training. So that's something that Lisa can advise you on, if you do believe that a censure is, is appropriate here. Generally, it is used by school boards to separate the school board from the liability related to one of the board members' conduct. And that's generally with, when there's a discriminatory comment or something along those lines that makes that necessary. Ms. Patterson provided some recommendations for additional training, and that's where I think the board should go with all of this. So that could be additional training regarding supervising and evaluating the superintendent, additional review of your board superintendent working agreement within the norms that you want to set out as a board, how to handle these communications with constituents when they are pressing you to provide information about your position, and, and information is as our right. And then having some additional discussion about the confidentiality of executive session and personal information, personnel information. So that's the report. Do you have any questions I can answer?
I certainly don't. I mean, I, nothing that's popping into my head right now. Thank you. We just, I just got it, we just got this an hour before the meeting or so. So I just kind of just paged through it really quick. So yours is the first, yours is the most, yours is the most that I've looked at it. So I plan on going home and spending some time with it. But, I don't know, does anybody else have any, any thoughts? Questions?
I mean, off the top of my head, I don't know that I do. What the...
Can we, can we follow up by chance? I mean, how would we, if we have questions, if something, if something, can we, how, how would we go about doing that?
I would suggest kind of somewhat of an orderly fashion that we do this. So how about if you submit any, if we end up having questions, as you have pondered it, read it, you know, thought about it a little bit, and we agree that you send all of those to Tom, and then Tom, we can coordinate and we can get them off to Rebecca, and then Rebecca can submit us some, if they're, if they're conducive to a written response, then I can ask her to provide us a written response.
I think that, I think that makes sense. Is there anything that you wanted to share with us regarding this process?
You are at the point where you now have to decide, you know, and I know tonight is not the night to do it, but you now, like, like with any complaint, okay, you, you have a group of people who have come to you and said, we don't like what happened, we think it was wrong, we think you should do X. You now have to decide what your response to that is, right? You now have completed all of your data gathering, right? And so the, the next response is like you would with any complaint that you get, which is responding to that group of people and telling them, you know, what, what you are or are not going to do in regards to their request, right? And that's, it seems kind of strange, but it's a very large kind of group with some, as Rebecca identified, some, some things that you can't necessarily provide, you don't have the authority to provide. But you do need to like, it wouldn't be any different than if I came to you and said, you know, I think that you, you know, you failed to follow your textbook adoption process, and this is where you went wrong. You then have to, you know, decide like, what are we going to do about it, right? Are we going to say, well, no, we, we followed our process, there is nothing we're going to do, textbooks are adopted, thank you very much. Yeah, we made a mistake, but we don't think it was, you know, crucial to how we were adopting our textbooks, our textbook adoption will stand. Or we think we made a mistake, and we should have done it differently, and this is what we're going to do to remedy it. That's the same, you know, it, it feels kind of weird because it affects you to some degree in this particular conversation, but it would be the same way as if any complaint came to you in regards to how a building principal was running their, the building, or how Paul was making decisions, or Dan, or anybody else, right? So there, there has to be some sort of response to the complaint at this point, right? And we have until, as we talked, you have until the end of this month to get our response back. Under the 90-day slot. I haven't counted the exact day, but ballpark.
Ballpark.
Okay, so we know what to do. Any questions, send them to me. Anybody, any questions anybody has right now before we...
Just maybe a quick sketch of a timeline. Probably too soon to make this a focus on the next week's regular board meeting agenda, I'm assuming, so we have, we have a schedule for a workshop on the 24th of February. Would that, is that too long? Or is that...
I'm open to either. I'm curious what other people think. I personally don't imagine I won't have time within a week to think about this and read this in more detail.
We'll be putting the agenda together for probably on Wednesday. That's right.
I'm kind of there, I'm kind of, yeah.
This week.
After tomorrow.
After tomorrow. I know, that's how it's spelled.
I could, yeah, I can have, have an opinion in a week, yeah.
I think if you, the complaint came in on the 25th of November, and if you think about 90 days, we'd have to, we'd have to run the numbers to, as you get to the...
We'd probably slide past that.
You're, you're getting close, right? Because December had 31 in it, so January, and while, so, you know, we pick up.
No, I, I got you.
So, just keep a target, I mean, target on that.
We'll fill the agenda for...
I think it's going to be the agenda for the next regular...
Does it include that?
Yeah, perfect.
So if you're going to have it on the board agenda for Monday, can we, in an effort to try and be somewhat aware that we are not the only person in the world that Rebecca is working for, could we agree that there's a drop-dead date when we would have any questions that would then be submitted to Rebecca, so that hopefully she could get us something back by the end of the week, so that you could include that information in whatever thought process you have? I mean, I don't know...
Not Monday at 3 o'clock.
Well, I'm not going to say absolutely no, but I think, you know, the...
Well, different questions might have different, you know, problems.
Right. The quality of the answer is truly, it's proportionally relevant to the amount of time we give people to provide you the information, so...
And a day Thursday, reasonable? That would be this Thursday with questions for Ms. Jacobson.
Because you want to be able to talk about it the next Monday, right?
So that's only pertinent if you have questions specifically for her, but, yeah.
I think that'll work.
The agenda item would be called...
I'm looking, I'm watching.
Complaint Resolution?
I'm sorry about this.
I'm just, I'm writing the agenda in my head that will be, as we build the agenda, on Wednesday will be, the subject of the item would be Complaint Resolution?
I think that would be adequate.
I really appreciate all the detail.
Or even Complaint Response, you know, I mean, you may or may not have a resolution at all as relevant to how people define resolution.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Here is the other notebook.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, so we'll have a conversation in a week, after you've had a chance to read. Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you very much.
We are going to move on to what is listed as item 4A, Ratification of Collective Bargaining Agreement of SFA, 2019 through 2022 year. So any discussion or commentary before we proceed?
I'm glad it's over. Glad we got there. And I'm prepared to vote yes.
I want to thank Paul and Dan, Steve, Kevin, and everybody who was, you know, involved, Nancy. I mean, it was, there was a lot of discussion, but that group was always, the whole time looking for ways to move us forward. SFA, I think, was as well. I wasn't involved in their caucus, but it was, it seemed like there was always a willingness to have a conversation again, which I think is ultimately how we pulled this off. So I really appreciate it.
And I appreciate you, Jonathan, and your leadership on the bargaining team. Thank you. I know you committed a lot of time, a lot of time outside of these meetings to that. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's a great demonstration of just a commitment to move forward collaboratively and in a new spirit of working together and supporting one another and being on the same team. So I'm very excited about it. I think it's a great product.
And thank you, Jonathan, too, for all your work. I mean, that was a lot of extra time that you put in above and beyond what we normally do, as well as what Paul, Jennifer, and Dan, and everybody did.
Yeah, it was a learning experience. It's my first rodeo, so it's interesting. Okay.
All right. I move to ratify the collective bargaining agreement between SFA and SFSD for the 2019 and 2022 duration.
I second it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I also want to mention that Shelley in absentia couldn't be here tonight, had a prior commitment. However, she wanted to make sure she was known to vote yea or aye or in favor of it as well. And she wanted me to read, "Congratulations to SFSD and SFA leadership teams for their hard work. To find common ground on all articles, healthy language and good communication creates relationships that benefits all involved to move forward on a new path. I'm proud to be a board member to witness this new direction in our district. Well done." Okay. Motion pass. All right. Congratulations. All right. Next up, Audit Report.
There he is.
Actually, I read it. Oh, he just
Yep.
Good evening. I want to introduce Kenny Allen, he's a partner and lead auditor on our annual audit from Polly Rogers. I really thank him for being here this evening to kind of co-present our 2018-19 audit report. So I know you all have a hard copy, as well as it's been posted on Board Book for everyone to be able to see for over a week now. So Kenny's going to just take a few minutes to do his summary of the report, kind of take you through the, some of the key items and maybe some changes with GASBIs and those types of things, and then I'll add a few remarks and definitely take some questions from you, so.
All right. Well, thanks for having me. The purpose of our audit was designed to determine fair presentation of General Exceptive Accounting Principles, Audit Standards, Oregon Municipal Audit Law, as well as the Federal Single Audit Act. Your results on our overall audit opinion, which is on page one of the large financial report, is an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of opinion received. Next, we have what we call our state minimum standards, where we have to look at things such as budget, collateral investments, public purchasing, items such as that. We noted two instances that required comment, which were some over expenditures noted on page 60 of the large financial report. Other than that, we noticed no other issues in that area. Next, what we have, we call our Federal Single Audit Act. That's when the district spends more than $750,000 of federal money, we have to go through and look at a program or two based on a risk-based approach of federal grants. This year, we found no issues of question costs or any findings in the Single Audit Act, so we have a clean opinion for those areas as well. There was no separate management letter issue, that's when we have like, you know, significant deficiencies in your control to report to you. Usually, we try to work together with staff to prevent those issues, make sure that we're, that staff is addressing them when we come out and, you know, March or April, before year ends, so we always try to have a proactive relationship with management so that we're not sitting here always telling you what's happening without, you know, assisting your staff and trying to fix it before it has to be reported to you. Next, this year, there was one new standard that was implemented, didn't have too much of effect on you, what we, it was called GASB, which is Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 88. That's when you have significant clauses in your debt that has acceleration clauses or other major default termination procedures in there, we'd have to disclose that. There was really no major problems or issues in your debt in that. Next, one thing I like to bring everybody's attention to is on page 31, this is probably the area I get most questions from, of boards and councils in the state of Oregon. This is what we call, this is your PERS, this is your portion of the statewide debt pension liability. If you look at the bottom of page 31, you can see that there's a table at the bottom that's $30 million, the middle number is like, they consider your portion of the statewide PERS liability. And what this table is, it's a sensitivity analysis. They're using, they say that if you have a discount rate of 6.2% or the middle one is 7.2 or the top one is 8.2, what's the range of your liability? So you can see that if they use a discount rate of 6.2%, your liability would be 51 million. If they use an 8.2% discount rate, it'd be about 13 million. And what a discount rate basically is, is their guess of future earnings. So you can see that if they're thinking they're going to have good years at 8.2%, your liability is going to be a lot less than it would be if it was 6.2, and they always use the middle number as what they say your estimate should be. So it's always something, a question we always get, of what does PERS look like? What's the, what's the issue? And that's, that's a good thing to always look at, is that sensitivity analysis every year, just to see where, where your numbers are.
Sorry. Stan gets.
Other than that, there was no difficulties in counterperforming the audit, no disagreements with management. If we had any of those, we'd have to let you know about those. Also, there is a few in our board letter, there's also a few new accounting standards that are coming out in the next few years. Nothing that's going to significantly impact or change it significantly, so I won't bore you with the accounting details, just, just so you know that we'll be working with the staff to make sure that those will get addressed as they come due in the next few years. So if you have any questions on the audit, the audit report, or the audit process, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
That's good. That's nice.
Let's say, page 67 and 68 is a good page, easy page to look at, that kind of the summary of the results, both from the financial statements and the federal awards. Again, you want to see an unmodified opinion, not modified, and this is just a nice checklist. I also think it's a good reminder to see, you know, we talk so much about the general fund, page 63 is that schedule of expenditure of federal awards, so it gives you a good idea, just as a refresher, of what federal programs are, we're getting grants from, you know, between title programs, the special ed IDEA funds, and the national school loan reimbursement, we receive about $1.28 million in federally, which is reflected in our Fund 200 Grants Fund. So this is always a nice, a nice refresher as to what we're getting there. At the front of the report, the Roman numeral pages after page three is our management write-up, the school districts write-up, the management discussion and analysis, that's always helpful, as well as the pages 14 through 38 are all the notes to the financial statement, which includes that significant section on all the, all the PERS information, how the system works, as well as our pension liability on pages 26 through 33, I feel like that's a real helpful area as well. So, and then, you know, as far as kind of drilling down from more of the, maybe the 15,000 foot level, you get the 5,000 foot or below level, what these, these are required supplements to the Oregon Department of Education. And this was also, I think it's in the, it's in the back of your report, and is also on Board Book, but really gets down to, the first page is revenue for all funds by source code, and then the second through the seventh pages are all the major funds, you know, Fund 100, General Fund, 200, 300, et cetera, by function and object. So it really gives you a good look at the expenditures at a very detailed level. So, so I feel like that that's always helpful. That's, this report, it has to be sent to the Department of Education, which has already been done both in paper and electronic format, and it has to also include these pages. So they also, it also goes to the federal audit clearinghouse with our single audit, and the Secretary of State's office, and the counties, Marion and Cloughers. So anyway, I think that's kind of an overall summary, and definitely want to take any questions you might have at this point in time, and certainly I know it's, it's a lot of information to digest, and take questions at any time down the road as well.
It is a lot of information. Thanks, Steve, for doing such a good job. I mean, this is essentially because of your good work, so thank you.
I want to thank the entire business department, and then our district office staff. Yeah, but thank you, appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. No questions, right? Making sure everybody's good. Okay. Investment Account Process Update.
So we're going to hear tonight, just a little process update. Ms. Ann is going to walk us through this and describe some of the things that we're doing and the manner in which we're doing it. So think of this as a preview to the preview to the first draft. That's really what it is. So you can hear a little bit about kind of our process tonight, and then on February 10th, we'll be sending you sort of our first draft for you to have, and then on February 24th, we'll go through sort of a longer presentation, and that'll be the actual first draft, so you'll have it, you'll have it in your hands at least for a few days. And then it'll be coming back after the first cut in, in March for approval. So we just want you to hear a little bit about how some of the work is getting done. So Ms. Ann, we'll walk us through.
Okay, this is just kind of a brief overview of what it is, where we've been in the last year, where we are now, and where we have yet to get to prior to our submission deadline, which is April 15th. So for those who don't, who aren't totally immersed in SIA right now, is the Student Investment Account an intensive program equity for all students by addressing the mental behavioral health needs and reducing academic disparities for students of color, emerging bilingual, disability, poverty, and other underperforming student population? And this is a key part, as measured by, they give you the four measures that ODE will accept here, third grade reading, regular attendance, ninth grade on track, and high school completion. There are four allowable expense categories, and those include increase in structural time, health and safety, reduction of class size, and expanded educational opportunities. So that is what we're looking at, and we started our process on this last school year with a full year of engagement from community, staff, parents, and kids to identify the priorities for Southern Falls School District, to develop our strategic vision plan, which becomes our continuous improvement plan. So I added some links, so when this goes up on Board Book, if you want more information about any of these, you can just click the link and it'll take you to the place on our website or the place on the ODE site, that will give you extensive information about that area. But the engagement feedback summary is listed on our site from last year, that was that full year process we met through. So starting this fall, 2019, the board approves our strategic visioning plan with the, with the focus areas including academic success, social emotional wellness, and facilities, and again, there's a link to that. And then we submitted our continuous improvement plan to Oregon Department of Education, and they approved that plan as well. And that is just our strategic visioning plan plus a supplemental tenet, again, there's a link to that. Then, meetings resumed for the district equity team with the purpose of creating a district equity tool, which will be necessary for us to run our plan through that district equity tool or the state equity tool prior to submission. Then we have a comprehensive data review by ODE to help us identify the data points that are accepted by them and the students, as they relate to the Student Success Act focal groups. And so the disparities that we have been able to identify in our district in those four areas include, well, there are in all of the areas, but specifically for emerging bilingual, disability, poverty, homeless, mental behavioral health for ninth grade on track, emerging bilingual, disability, poverty, and behavioral health for third grade reading, chronic absenteeism is disproportionate for poverty mental health, and graduation rates are disproportionate by poverty mental behavioral health tag for us is a disproportionate graduation rate. And then I just added a note, I don't know, some of you were on the board at the time, but a year, it was maybe a full year ago or just over a year ago, we did a report on all of our non-completers in the previous five years, what the profiles of those kids were, and all of those kids had a profile that included some significant mental behavioral health, significant family disruption, complex issues around poverty homelessness, not necessarily the academic stuff, but the other stuff. So I just thought it was important to put that note in there. We're looking at our ultimate measure being high school completion, those are the areas we have to target. So this winter, we just met with the charter schools to discuss the district sponsorship for their SIA completion. There's a link there if you're interested to see what that looks like. And then we had some additional student and family engagements that are required through the Student Success Act, specific to those student focal groups. So how we did that was a complete survey to all families with disabilities, community partner engagement with shelter in Silverton. We got already some feedback from them, which our admin team felt like was the, probably the most impactful feedback that we've gotten. They gathered that information for us, it was amazing, but they are continuing that work with us. We have the Youth Truth Survey, that's the Culture and Wellness Survey, that will go to all staff and students, grade 312, and all parents in February. We had our ELD families, both in parent meetings at our high school, it's been three times in the last 18 months, and also one-on-one through their case managers. They got, they got phone calls asking those three questions that, that ODE asked us to explore. And then focus groups for the staff that work with our focal group students, so counselors, support advocates, all dead, social workers, and we just completed that as well. So then the next step is district leadership team engages the ODE process for SIA application completion, and those processes are linked here if you'd like to look at them, it's a brief 96 pages long. That for us included reviewing all of the engagement input, clustering it into focus areas, comparing our cluster areas against their district data to make sure that what our engagement focus groups were saying were our issue, that our data supported, that those really were our issues. Then we consult the quality education model, recommendations for the best practices to address the needs that we identify, and then we can consider allowable expense categories for the ODE targeted outcomes for those focal group students under the SIA. That will be complete, and we hope to have it drafted by February 10th, so you can read it, go and absorb it, do your research, and have questions ready for us on February 24th when we begin the community input process. This spring, we have yet to do, the equity team will need to review the SIA application using the district equity tool. We hope to have that district equity tool completed by tomorrow afternoon, in fact. The district SIA plan will be formally presented to the board on February 24th. We will have a month for public input opportunities, and then board approval by either the March 9th or the April 13th meeting, hopefully March 9th, because April 13th will make the first areas, comparing our cluster areas against their district data to make sure that what our engagement focus groups were saying were our issue, that our data supported that those really were our issues. Then we consult the quality education model recommendations for the best practices to address the needs that we identified. And then we can consider allowable expense categories for the ODE targeted outcomes for those focal group students under the SIA. That will be complete, and we hope to have a draft to you by February 10th, so you can read it, go and absorb it, do your research, and have questions ready for us on February 24th, when we begin the community input process. This spring, we have yet to do, the equity team will need to review the SIA application using the district equity tool. We hope to have that district equity tool completed by tomorrow after the event. The district SIA plan will be formally presented to the board on February 24th. We will have a month for public input opportunities and then board approval by either the March 9th or the April 13th meeting, hopefully March 9th, because April 13th will make me a little bit nervous, because the deadline for submission is April 13th. And then I just included on this, which I will not read to you because it's been an evening, right, but you can look when it's posted on Board of just a process that we went through for one of our expenditure activities, which was a K5 literacy curriculum. So it goes all the way from where the focus group comments and then how the data supports it, and then does the SIP support it, our continuous improvement plan, and then does the quality education model support it, and then others applying the equity? Is it allowable expense? Then we add it as an activity, and then I just included what the data was that we looked for for that particular one. So this one is around third grade reading for that K5 literacy program. So these are our SBAP report cards. So you can see here that we're performing Oregon State's at 47, we're at 56, but you can see that not everybody, not all of our subgroups are at 56, so we have some disparities there. That's by the report card. We also have these focal group measures from ODE. Lots of color, I'm telling you, how everybody's performing on everything every year. And then also our star reading, which our administrators look at the star reading reports every month in the, in our administrator PLCs, and that, these scores are really what informs our work, because the ODE reports are great, and they're what we will be accountable to for the SIA reporting and SIA spending. But we refer to those as the autopsy reports, because it's one shot at the end of the year. There's nothing you can do about it then at the end of the year. So the star scores are really what inform our work as we move through the year. We can adjust those as we go. Questions?
That's a lot of great information. The, the equity tool, is that something that the board has any role in, or do we just sort of review the overall? At what point does the board get involved, or do we? Maybe that's my question.
So if, if we were to adopt an equity policy, then obviously that would be your work. I don't know if that's where it will go. It's being worded right now, I believe, as an equity tool, because it needs to be done now. So it's similar, it borrows some work from the, a lot of it is from the ODE equity tool, but it essentially says this is our belief about equity, and so with that belief, these are the questions we need to ask before we allocate resources or make decisions. So like, an example of a question to ask would be, how, what might be unintended consequences of this decision be on our most vulnerable populations? So that would be a question we would consider before we allocate funds or make a decision.
So equity tool is akin to what I've heard as an equity lens. Is that true?
Yeah, we're using those terms.
We're saying tool, because we don't know if it will end up being a policy or a lens or a statement, or we're not sure.
Fair enough. I'm just trying to make sure my mental model is like.
Yeah, an equity policy is forthcoming. You've got to do this work first.
Yeah. So they haven't defined their, their equity tool yet, you're saying? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, it's, I'm, we worked on this two years ago.
Oh, it's going to be your tool.
So it's really similar to what you guys saw last year. Was it last year? Two years ago?
Year and a half.
Year and a half ago? It's really similar to what you saw, but it got hung up on, this doesn't really read like a policy, like how would you enforce this? Is it a practice? Is it a lens? Is it policy? So it got kicked back, and we haven't done anything with it since then, but now we need to actually use it, so that work has picked back up.
And the district equity team is working on this.
Okay.
And they meet again tomorrow, hopefully wrap up, wrap it up enough that we can use this, this tool for the service.
And is it the same? Are there some members that, of the group that were the same like two years ago? Because I know we started in equity.
Yes.
Okay. Because I just want to honor the work that they already did.
And we have added a few members.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm, I misunderstood your, your presentation. I thought this was something, a tool that the state had for you guys to use.
The state does have a tool, and ours is really similar.
Okay, okay.
If the district does not have its own tool, then we are to use the state tool. But our hope is that ours will be complete tomorrow and we'll be able to use ours.
Okay. Okay. Good.
Any other questions?
Any discussion?
It's been a lot of really detailed, hard work, and then Ms. Hannah's presentation, all your work leading to this point, is that, with the principles, it's been a really heavy lift this year.
Did that be available in your presentation?
Yes, we're getting it on Board Book.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Okay. Next up, we are on 4D superintendent search, possible action needed. Yes, so as you all know, we pushed the pause button, I guess November it must have been, or December, one or the other, and, you know, decided to kind of, you know, let some of this stuff get processed. While we haven't formally finished the, the work on the, on the complaint, we're going to do that next week, we do need, it's time to begin this conversation again around a superintendent search. You know, we, we're currently in the window where we're okay, according to OSBA resources, Greg McKenzie, you know, they've said, you're still okay, it's not too late. But, you know, should we wait another month or two, we clearly would be out of that window and into hurry-it-up mode. So that's the backdrop. This is meant to be a conversation leading possibly to an action, so.
Lady, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last part.
Leading possibly to an action.
To an action, okay.
To, to a decision of some nature that, that we choose to vote on. I'm just opening it up for conversation initially.
So do we need to take action? I can't remember, did we take official action? Did we vote on pausing it last time at that November meeting? Was that an actual action?
That feels like seven years ago.
I mean, do we need an action to restart it?
I believe we should, if, if our goal is to restart it and have Sarah or Greg or some member of that group come back next week or at the work session in three weeks, then we should vote tonight so that we have that clear and we can communicate to them clearly what our expectations of them are. As far as they know, they're still just on the sidelines.
Pause, yeah. Okay.
So I'll, I'll start with a couple of things. One is, I've heard it suggested that, you know, well, in fact, I believe we were formally presented with the concept that we might hire another interim for a year. I'm not a big fan personally. I don't like the idea of another year without somebody who's able to, you know, make the decisions that need to be made or feel confident, the full confidence of the board to move forward with policy. I mean, we have all these things happening, and I feel like it's, would leave us in a position of treading water, I guess. So that's my opinion. I'm not a big fan of, of another one-year stint personally. So I guess there's the opening salvo, I guess, can weigh in on your thoughts.
No, I agree, but that seems really sort of disconnected and doesn't really achieve much for us, so I'm not that supportive of going through a process to, to hire another interim or to do another one-year.
Other thoughts?
I'm sympathetic to both of those points of view.
No, yeah, I don't want to have another interim. Just restart the process.
Thank goodness. I mean, I think we need to make sure that we've got things moving. I don't want us to be in a position where we are too late to attract candidates, things like that.
So by restarting it, we still have the ability to, with each step, weigh in as a board as it starts to move again? We just want to wake up?
Right. I mean, so when we first kicked this off, one of the questions we asked of Sarah was, you know, what happens partway through this process if we want to change direction in any manner? Pause it again? What if we stopped? What if we wanted to? Anyway, she says we, they're completely 100% flexible. So, you know, it's, we're driving it, they're helping it, they're facilitating it, and...
And if I remember where we ended up, we, we had, had we formally adopted the Q and Qs? Or did we need to do that?
I think we still need to do that.
We still need to do that? Okay. And then after that, they write up their description, and then it gets posted. And I think that happens fairly quickly.
Fairly quickly, yes.
Okay. So those are the next activities.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Well, I think we need to get things started again. To have, you know, alert those, Greg McKenzie and Sarah.
I'll, I'll be in touch right away if that's...
I think it's good that we get it. The go.
Okay. I, Neil, I, I think that we should, just because we paused it, we should change direction. I think we should continue with the direction that we all voted on and move forward.
All right, ready?
Like, wrong agreement. I think it sounds like, I didn't hear anybody suggesting otherwise.
Okay. I move to resume the superintendent search process with OSB and Greg McKenzie as previously planned by board. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, unanimous.
Okay.
And unless I'm missing something, we're at the end, so without objection, meeting adjourned.